"America's Future" walks through the halls of our school every single day. So said the director of the United States Department of Education. For the last thirty years, I've been sharing with students who walk into Farmington School, and I lead purple. So I'm happy to be a part of this tonight. Thank you for caring and coming. Thank you for caring and wanting to serve. Our five candidates, four will be elected. I decided to do an alphabetical order, and it's very courteous with ladies first. Kay Faralli, Todd Guedi, Dakota Horn, Kelly Crew, and Ron Sessin. Each candidate was told before tonight that they would have an opportunity to introduce themselves and give an opening statement. After that, they each will be answering four questions, which they also were already informed of, and after that, we will take the questions that you have submitted. So now, let's meet the candidates. Okay?
Okay, my name is Kay Faralli. I have lived in the Farmington School District for six years plus years. I graduated from Farmington Community High School. I attended, I graduated from Swinover College, and I have two degrees from Bradley University. My daughters, Andrew and Gina, both received an excellent education from our district. And I taught in the district for thirty years.
Good evening, my name is Todd Guedi, and I've lived in Farmington most of my life. I graduated from Farmington East High School when I was asleep. My wife, Amy, and I have five children. Four have already graduated from Farmington, and my youngest son is a freshman. I'm a network administrator at the Alliance Benefit Group, and I've been employed by the Dome for eighteen years.
Good evening, my name is Dakota Horn. I've lived in Farmington my entire life. Born and raised here at the old school, at the old school. I've moved to the new school. It seems to transition between the two. I currently work at State Farm here in Farmington. I graduated in 2009 from Farmington High School. 2012, with my bachelor's in communication from Western Illinois University. And while I'm working full-time, I am currently pursuing my master's degree in communication at Western Illinois University. No kids in the district, however, my father is a teacher in the school district, and I do live currently in Farmington.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Crew. My wife, Amy, resident, and graduated from Farmington Community also. I attended Swinover College, graduated there, and finished up the University of Illinois Business and Agriculture back in 1986. I currently celebrate going on my 21st year at Atticore. I currently hold a quality engineer role there. I'm currently up for reelection, and I hope to talk to you after the meeting.
Hello, I'm Ron Sessin. Let me pause for a second and apologize. I have been sick for the past three days, so if I sound a little under the weather, yes I am. But I feel this is very important for me to be here for this candidate. I'm born and raised and graduated from Farmington East High School. So is my family, my mom, my father. My mom, my brother, my father. Currently employed at the Illinois Department of Corrections at Illinois River Correction Center in Canton. I'm a 23-year Army National Guard veteran as an officer. I'm retired lieutenant colonel in service. I'm also a graduate of Swinover College and Western Illinois University with a political science degree. I've been on several different boards as far as city council for five years, and I've also spent seven years on county board.
Can you all hear them back there? All right, all candidates were informed that they would be asked the following four questions. One, why are you choosing to run for the school board? Two, in your opinion, what are the strengths of our school district? Three, how will your serving on the school board positively benefit the district? And four, what do you hope to accomplish? So the first question, why are you choosing to run for the school board? We are going to start with Kay. After Kay tells why she is choosing to run, we will just go right down the list out prophetically for the first question. So Kay, why are you choosing to run for the school board?
I'm choosing to run for the school board because I feel it is an opportunity for me to give back to the children of the district. I've enjoyed teaching the children for thirty years, and now I'd like to give back.
I would like to continue the work that I and the other board members have accomplished over my last few years of being on the board. I enjoy working with the other board members. I believe that we are all working well together.
I've chosen to run again for school board, and it's the same reason I did four years ago. A youthful voice platform that I ran on. At 23-years-old, I still feel that I have that connection to students and teachers in this district that many others may not have. I look forward to working with many of the board members that I have worked with in the last four years to continue the progress that was created in the last four years.
I feel that it's one of my privileges to be able to give back to the district if you're willing to reelect me. I feel like the school went off and was able to give me a good foundation and open up my horizons, both locally and internationally, with some of the different activities I've done. And I would like to continue to see that perspective nurtured within our kids as they go through these gates of this community. There are certain opportunities some people don't realize are out there, and sometimes I open up some of the teachers' perspectives when I talk to them through the board. I've chosen to run for school board because of the different boards I have been on, and I don't feel that, just like the city council, I've been on the city council, then I got off the city council, because I feel it's other people's turn to take the place. Same as the county board, that's only county board. I have not gone back for the county board because I feel it's another someone else's turn to take their opportunity to get their different ideas. It's another reason why I'm running for the school board, I think it brings some new ideas, as well as accountability financially, as well as keeping students accountable for their actions, as well as some different ideas that I can bring to the board.
And the second question, and this time we're going to start with Ron, but back in reverse order. In your opinion, what are the strengths of our school district? And one of you, number, the main strengths of our school.
I'll start off with our faculty and our teachers. I think that's one of the best things we have here. And the curriculum, I think we have a great curriculum. The new school, especially with the improvements that they're making with the solar program, I was always curious why we had the angle of rose when we did, why the school was built, and they didn't even think about the solar program back then. I think that's a great thing that the school board is finally getting on track of, is natural resources that we can have.
A lot of the strikes I see going on is, yes, we've got a new school here, and we need to take advantage of it. We've got a good curriculum that we've been honing in the last couple of years. We've got a lot of new teachers coming onboard, and one of my concerns is also retention and development of those teachers with the experienced teachers that we have. How we can combine both the experience and the new ideas together to help develop our students, to make them more marketable in the future, whether it is going to jobs, or to trades, or to further their education.
I agree with Ron, you talked about boots on the ground, doesn't matter what we do as a board in terms of policies and procedures, we can't implement them. So our faculty and staff, administration has done a fantastic job of carrying forward our vision, but ultimately, it's our 21st century learning environment that we create. You walk through, and you see our computer labs, and our attempt to get the many tablets and iPads that we can in the hands of the individuals, social media curriculum that we'll be implementing in the fall. We're trying to stay ahead of what happens in terms of technology. When you look at other, I think we're far above any other district's requirements, so those are some of the main, but there's a huge list of accomplishments that we could go on and on, but those are the key ones I want to touch on.
Like Dakota said, we have many strengths, our teachers, our support staff, the administration, and our students. We, sorry, really strong, we are physically strong, I'm sorry, and while many districts are struggling. Our building and ground are beautiful, and we get compliments from other schools when they visit. Again, like you Dakota said, with our technology, right now, our technology is second to none around this area. We are, we are the cutting edge. The computer lab, we just put in a new wireless network that covers the entire building and doesn't have any problems with dead spots. That's something that was very dear to me because of my background in high school.
I think our caring parents, when I was a teacher, I was always impressed with the parents in my class. I feel like our teachers and support staff are excellent, and they care about our students. And they work well with the teachers also, both of them. Technology is also a strength. I think our new building size is a strength. I think our ongoing alignment and common core in our curriculum is also a very strong point in our district.
Thank you. You should be proud of Farmington, farmer's like me. The third question is, how will you, serving on the Farmington School Board, positively benefit our district? And this time, we're going to start with Dakota, and then with this left, Kelly, Ron, Becky, Kay, and then to Todd. So Dakota, how will you, serving on our school board, positively benefit our district?
Sure. When I ran four years ago, I thought I had all these great ideas that were in this district. I brought some of them, and some of them, I realized that they were pipe streets. But now, I completely remodeled our administrative staff. We've had tremendous turnover in the last four years, but I think we're in a great place in terms of riding the ship that heads in the right direction. So now, the next four years, if I am reelected, it's continuing those projects that I brought to the table in terms of solar projects, whole social media curriculum, all kinds of different, we're working on a sustainable garden out there as well that I've helped implement. It's just those final things that I want to see through, and the projects that we started. It's tough to change things in four years, but I think four more years, if we can have those ideas, finish them off with the help of board members and everybody in this district, I think we'll be in a great place, even better than we are right now, four years from now.
Over the last four years, I, along with the other former, current board members, like you said, have revamped the administration staff. And one of the forefronts that we were looking at during that, that I was striving for, is somebody that I think would be fiscally responsible, and I strive to find somebody when we were going through the group that was very strong in that area. Through the last four years, I've been on several of the different committees and groups, and I've been repeatedly asking questions, okay, how many bids have you gotten for these ideas? You know, it's our minimum of three ditters every time that we go off and are looking at outlaying capital expenditure projects. And that's coming back from my experience outside here through the Atticore organization, and also trying to keep focus on the small dollars, as I grew up on a community farming area also. One of my strengths, I feel, is that, plus also that I've had one student that went through the school, and currently have a freshman here also, so I get his perspective of what's going on actually in the classrooms today and tomorrow, while the kids are still in the classrooms.
Some of the positives I feel I bring to the board, strong leadership, my military experience, as well as different boards I've been on as far as financial boards. When I was on the county board, I was financial, for the seven years I was on the county board, I was a financial chairman, I was a chairman of the financial committee for three years. Through two of them years, we brought forth a red, a red touch. If anybody knows what a red touch is, that's really bad, it's a negative. And all, all three of them years ended up being positive in the block. That's because we made sure that every penny was accounted for and made aware of. I feel that sometimes that there's a lot of money that goes into general funds that could be more accountable than one of those.
Okay, me serving on the board will be a positive benefit to the district, because having spent thirty years in the classroom, also being a parent with a child, my kids are long now, by the way, and a taxpayer, I feel I can offer a different perspective on issues that have come to the attention of the board, and also being retired, I have time to offer.
I've served on many of the committees that Kelly has, fallen board, and we have made very many positive changes. For me personally, I bring technical knowledge up to the board. I'm always willing to listen to any viewpoints and glad to offer suggestions and ideas.
And question number four, what do you hope to accomplish? This time, we're going to start with Kelly, then Ron, Kay, Todd, and then to Dakota. So Kelly, what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, I like to, if I would happen to be reelected, I'd like to see the continuation of our solar project that I have some hands to do with on that also. But I've started asking also about the trades group. We got some ongoing relationships, starting out with the interior area trades for some of our high school students also, and that's just started up this past year, and I hope to develop that further in the programs also. Not everybody's going to be slated to go to a four-year university, and I'd like to see to have more time to be able to help them with that program.
What I feel like we don't accomplish is continue the strong structure we have, accountability, and continue the quality of education we have. I think, I think one idea that you have, that I'd like to have accomplished, is having the school board meetings streamlined on the school website. Not everybody can make it to the school board meetings, and even when I do go to the school board meetings, not many attend. Maybe my alumni attend, maybe you can get more views on it if I streamline it on a computer system, or even possibly recording them and putting them on the website.
Okay, what do I hope to accomplish? One person alone cannot accomplish anything, but by offering another perspective and working with other board members, I hope to give board members other things in which to consider to help them make their decisions.
If I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, I want to make sure that we continue to offer the best education that we can to our students, and stay fiscally responsible.
When we created our vision plan two years ago, we included the community on that project to say, what do we want for our school district by the year 2020? And I don't want them to be just a part of the planning process, I want them to be a part of the project. So I want to make sure that the community and everybody that has investment in this district still feels welcome to come in and share their ideas. And like Kay said, as one individual on the board, I'm one of seven of those. So as a whole, I'd like the district to move together in one unified vision.
And now we have some questions that you have submitted, that the candidates have not seen, so I'm going to start a couple easy ones. What is your opinion, is a good class size for breaks, Kay through two? And since Ron, you were the only one, I think, that didn't get to, I don't know what, Kelly was the only one who didn't get the answer first, last one. So Kelly, would you like to start? And everyone has an opportunity to answer each of these.
The area was Kay through two, right?
Yes, what is, in your opinion, is a good class size for Kay through two? For helping the younger primary students.
Well, like you said, that's kind of a variable question, also depending on what we can do with our finances in regards to add possibly age into the class. Ideally, it's strictly an educator with no age, probably about fifteen to seventeen max. But if we can add some age to help carry the load out with them, then we can increase that. But also, we get into is trying to be financially stable with these decisions and stay within our means, because sometimes if we add headcount, something else is going to have to give also in a long run, I think.
I tend to agree with Kelly, but I would, I believe it would be like twenty would be with one teacher, but with ages, thirty.
I think fifteen to eighteen with a single teacher, if you're going to have an age, then maybe twenty, twenty-two, not many more.
That's right about where I am at. We did, a couple of years ago, get a huge influx of kindergartners, so we had to adjust, move people around, add some classes, so I'd like to keep it around that range.
Well, I'm glad Kay was up here answering the question, and I got a follow-up. I often agree with Kay, because she's a teacher. I'll be quite honest with you, the administrative staff and teachers, that's where we try to get the feedback, where we sit down and say, well, how many kids can we have? Well, it's a great question, but I haven't sat through a classroom with Kay through two, and Kay...
I have a Kay through two in fourth grade.
Exactly, and then we also have another...
I admire those teachers.
Another board member on our staff that works at District 150, so I call Wendy up and say, what do you think? So this is where we're talking about delegation, so I go Kay then.
Teachers always are, yeah, the senior going on with District 150, and I am glad that we have a few students here, but I'm certain they did not write this question. What are your thoughts of school uniforms, like a private school in District 150? Ron, you want to start with you, and is that the direction? Should I ask, is that fair to ask a military man about uniforms?
I use the uniform, so does this roll with other fathers here? No, I'm not, I'm not for directly for school uniform, no. But I do feel that parents need a parent. Want to say that? Parents need a parent. And too often, school is led to believe that, you know, it's too free-flowing, run wherever they want, which, you know, there's, there's a professionalism in holding yourself, and I think people should still hold themselves, as well as kids and students, should hold themselves professional in a professional institution. And we, I see this as a professional institution.
Yeah, I think this is a question that comes up every time we have a reelection state. So, that being said, you know, it can go either way. I mean, I, I really don't care which way it goes. I'd be probably neutral on a decision, depending on what facts the administrative staff would bring in front of us or the community. You'd have to weigh out the pros and cons and see what it is. I mean, there's some pros on it, you know, is it going to decrease some of the social media bullying or something? Because if one Johnny's got clothes that are a little bit not up to snuff with somebody else, to get some of that perspective out of the classrooms, that sometimes there's stuff that goes on, just because of what somebody wears, a label on their shirt, whatever. You know, we've seen it all on the board on some of the different issues that we've had to bring up in the last four years, and some of it stems back to bullying either inside the classrooms, outside the classrooms, and this is one of the things that can feed into it.
And I'll, I'll agree with Ron on the professional atmosphere pressure of oneself, and so yes, there are boundaries, and I'm not a huge man of uniforms as well. The same problem we have with non-uniformed, we have with uniformed in terms of pushing the boundaries, so I'm not fully supportive of uniforms.
I would have to say I'm pretty neutral on the subject too, probably more towards, not uniforms, simply because I think our administration does a pretty good job of policing people, if you want to say it that way, if they're not wearing something appropriate. That's where my statements would go.
I think you're smiling because that was one of my debate questions my fourth grade did once upon a time. And I, it's just a neutral subject, I really don't have any strong feelings on it. There's a lot of bliss, like they say, pros and cons both ways. As a teacher, many times I wish to have uniforms for teachers, so we weren't the same things every day, but it's just kind of a neutral issue. It's not strong feelings.
I have a couple of questions here that are similar, so I'm just going to put those together. Obviously, we do read the Weekly Post. Because the two comments say, referring to an article in the Weekly Post about the new contract with the bus company. A fellow board member had concerns regarding conditions of the bus, like no heat on some of the buses. Later it was found, and on a state inspection, seven of the fifteen buses were grounded due to safety issues. So, to the incumbents, how much investigation did you do on the concerns of that new contract? What was the process that was followed for that decision? And to the new candidates, what process would you go through to make decisions to which the fellow board members show concern as such? And on another card I have, before voting yes on the new bus contract, why did you board not look harder into the condition of Illinois Central's bus? Because there are concerns, especially no heat on the bus.
I'll go ahead and deal with that one first. Just as any decision that's made usually is delegated to something, maybe to that transportation committee, they did the research into exactly what kind of bid we had. We had two bids that came through, and I believe the first student in Illinois Central correct. So, same company that we've been back and forth, back and forth. So, the statement that no research was put into it, I know that is false, but what we're looking at is, you had two options. In an ideal world, we have all of our buses right here on our lot. We take care of them, we maintenance them, we have all of our drivers. I a hundred percent agree with that, but in terms of financial times, we can't just go walk out and buy all these buses this time. So that might be a little bit more expansive on the answer that I wanted to give you, but the transportation committee, they're due diligence on that. I don't serve on the transportation committee, but we had all of our questions that we wanted answered, were answered. Is it the perfect solution? I guess that's in the eye of the holder, but I do believe, and my transportation guru will agree with me.
On the bus bids also, like you said, there was two bids, the one to go work with the contract, and the one that did not receive the contract, had the contract before, and we had similar issues, if not identical issues, with that bus company also. And we had a lot more management issues over there with the, how should I say, the administration of what was going on with the buses and the drivers, and we had issues sometimes with four buses not being on time when they arrived at the school also. Because not only, there's both the safety of students, number one, that's also got to do with buses being on time, and also the right number of buses being available every day also. And we had days where they had to double up with the other one. And we weighed, you know, we leveled everything out, and then there was just a huge cost difference between the two also.
I do not serve on the transportation committee anymore, I did, and I do know, like Dakota said, and Kelly said, that the transportation committee did do their duty of diligence. Unfortunately, we only had two bids. We have tried in the past to get other companies to bid, to come in to bid, and we just can't entice anybody that wants to come into the district. Again, like Dakota said, we've been thinking about, you know, in the future, maybe buying buses here and there and start working towards that. We're not sure what we're going to do with that yet, but that's been brought up with the board.
And one of the other things we looked into was even pooling with another district. We looked at combining bids with Illinois to see if we could get a better bid, and that didn't pan out. We looked into buying our own buses, and the current economic stats not feasible until at least the school gives an office tomorrow or later. Maybe a little sooner, it depends on what happens with some of the bond issues that are going on right now.
Okay, and then go to the next question, and ideals.
Yeah, I'll just, just briefly on that. As far as the no heat, you know, and as far as the being grounded... As far as the no heat, you know, and as far as the being grounded, you know, and I don't need to bring a question back to these folks, but my question is the accountability. And I, we keep everybody accountable, keeping people accountable. So, my question is, is who's being held accountable for the no grounds? Now, I was at the school board meeting, that the, I think it's a bus direct, the meeting, the maintenance meeting?
No, no, no. He's the manager.
Thank you, he's our manager. And he stood up and said that he's there two hours ahead of time to make sure that all the buses are running and have heat on the real cold days. I tend to think that's a little facetious, but maybe he did. I wasn't there, I can't say he's lying, can't say, can't say he was wrong, but I kind of feel that me traveling on the other side of Galesburg, I believe that's where he lives, travel over here to be two hours ahead of time is a little... Well, like you said, that's not enough. I mean, I don't tell anyone to point fingers, but I just think, and if the, if that, if we do have these issues, is the bus company being held accountable for their actions? You know, and if they are, what, what is, what is being done to hold them accountable? You know, are we reduced, hey, you know what, this happened, you know, is there something in the contract that, that, that the school gets back? You know, and we just say, oh, well, it happens, oh, well.
I'll have to address that, Ron. It's a vicious cycle, because if you look at it, we had this conversation, I believe it was eight months ago, or we said, well, they weren't meeting one of the expectations that we laid down. We said, okay, we're just going to pay them. Well, if you don't pay the bus company, the kids aren't getting to school. So, then you're like, okay, then let's bid out, but we can't break the contract. And then we get tied up in this legal circuit. So, I completely agree, and I know exactly where you guys are coming from, whoever posed the question. But we get into bureaucracy and it's fine. So, how do we fix that? I don't know. What do we put in the clause, if it was in the contract, makes it, say, okay, if you can't meet these expectations, what do we do? Well, other than saying, we're going to have any buses next week? I mean, that doesn't accomplish anything. So, how do we create an accountability scale for a bus company that we lease out? Anybody's opinion on that would be greatly appreciated, but our administrative staff has done a great job of holding them. So, Derek Clayton, one of our assistant principals, has done a great job every day being on the phone with that bus company. So, in terms of what the district has done, we've done as much as we can. I'm not saying that it's done, but we've got to find a way, and we're on, I see exactly where you're coming from in terms of accountability.
And if there's nothing built into the contract then? That if they don't live up, say like the buses don't have heat or something, there's something built into the contract?
To do, and then to do what?
Well, I mean, you know, there'd be something, like if they didn't do something, then...
But that's the thing, is do we, we not pay them and then we have no service? That's, that's what I'm saying, is they kind of got our answer to the fire of that. So, I'm not saying that you guys are wrong, but it just poses a tricky...
Where, where do you, where do you come up with thirty buses in a week?
Well, and, and we sat there, we all sat there at the meeting when the manager assured us that, that all those buses had heat, and that he was there two hours before. I mean, we're, we're taking the manager's word for it, you know. The next step is, I guess we have to have somebody of our school, you know, somebody at the school go out there two hours early and make sure he's there. I don't think that's a good solution.
I know, in the past, when I was trying, working in East Bori, there was a lot of time I'd go buy a five-thirty, buses were run, because I had to be in, like, in East Bori at six in the morning. So, I was driving by, and I started on some of the cold mornings in question. So, just as a drive-by visual, and I don't know a whole thirty of them were running at that time, there was buses that were turned on and getting warmed up.
Although that tests our nerves, our next question is going to be about testing. I have a couple of comments here or questions. What are your views on testing, the PARCC, the MAP testing? And with Common Core and PARC test, why are we testing when all of that information has not been talked to our students yet? Anyone? Anyone want to start that?
Sure, I'll, why not? I'll field first too. I've always, can't say that I've been a strong opponent to testing. I'm not a fan of testing, because what happens is, if you get into the system of just pushing them through, we'll get the test results, everything like that. So, I am not a fan of testing. Now, we are forced by higher powers, state, federal governments, and say, this is something they have to do, or withhold funding. Now, is that fair? We have no choice on that. And, you know, you've seen in the media, PARC testing is optional, you know, kids can opt out of that. I'm not encouraging anyone to do that, but it happens. They, they have their foot. So, if I were to give you one blanket statement, I'm not a fan of testing, however, we are forced to do it. So, electing us up here is not going to change the testing in this school district. That's a different, a different body that tells us we have to do it. Good thing.
I'm, I'm in agreement. I'm not a big fan of testing, I'm not opposed to it either, but I think we're forced to do it, and we don't have a choice.
I think that we have so much testing that it does take valuable time out of the classroom, but it requires them all.
All right. Next one is, what are your thoughts on adding extracurricular, they have listed two, soccer or wrestling, in our present economy, with the state's inability to pay for what we already have?
I'll take it. I don't know, a lot of you have been hearing in the past week, since we've got a new governor in the last six, eight months, one of the things going around, and they're talking now about two percent across the board cut. That's everybody. That's school districts, that's county, that's municipalities, everybody. All of them. Maybe we take another two percent out of our budget, where's that come from? And at the same time, we'll want to add extracurricular. If a group, an organization wants to come up with a bill of money, you know, then we can entertain the thought. But right now, we are in a very, very unknown area from month to month, what we're actually going to get reimbursed. My guess is we're going to get less instead of more. I'll just leave it at that.
Right now, we're being reimbursed by the state eighty-nine percent of our transportation. They're, they mandate us to bus the students, but we get reimbursed with eighty-nine percent. We are physically fit right now, I do believe that. We, we get a great score every year, in fact, our score was four out of four this year from the, from the auditorium. But at the same token, we don't know what the state's going to do. I mean, there's no money, everybody knows that going away. There's just no money, and what money there is, doesn't come to harm with you.
I think that my, that question might need to be imposed somewhat to me. No, I'm not running for the school board because of the wrestling bridge, and I'm trying to get wrestling into the program, unless people might think that I'm not buying money. Okay? But at the same time, I also feel that I, and I've been instructly, said, we just bought a whole bunch of brand-new football, football uniforms. And we buy new, new uniforms for other, other programs throughout the year, throughout, you know, do they need to buy, do these new uniforms, do these, do these new equipment for other, other sports need to be purchased also? You know, I think that some of those, some of those could be, can be cut down, as well as, and I have, I have questioned this many times, price per student, for instance, for different sports, is it, is it even economic to have some of the different sports that we do have? Okay? Now, in wrestling, I, I've been, we, we, I've ran, we've run the wrestling program for the past five years, and it's financially supported itself. You know, can some of the other sports pick up, pick up their slack and sell more stuff? And I hate to say, push it back on the students, push it back on the kids, but, you know, if you really want that program, if you really want to do that, maybe that's what needs to be done.
And, and some of them are. I feel like the band boosters right now, they're having a number of fundraisers during the next year, trying to just get their new band to open. And some of the footballers, some of the money did come from the boosters, but one of them also.
Well, to build on that, we've worked hand-in-hand with music boosters, athletic boosters, government money that we're allotted, you know, government is allowing us to educate children, extracurriculars or extracur... Now, I'm not saying that I am opposed to, I believe that we should have more, it would, it's basically possible, but the wrestling comes to mind, where they, you know, look into ways to individually finance. We don't. Soccer, I'm a big proponent of having soccer here as well, you know, and I was actually approached by a staff member that works here, about a fifty thousand dollar startup grant for the soccer program. Well, you lay that on the table in front of us, and we've got the grant, we're ready to rock and roll. How can we say no to fifty thousand dollars? We're going to approach that. So, if we have proposals that are laid down in front of us that make sense, and we can encourage this program, absolute, but just coming to us and saying, I like soccer, and then we have to figure out how to find the money and staffing, everything like that, yeah, that's, that's hard for us to make that decision. But if there is an effort from somebody outside the board that can push us in the right direction, this fifty thousand dollar startup grant, or wrestling, self-funding, stuff like that, helps the district make those decisions and encourage new activities.
Okay, we have a follow-up question to what we were just talking about with testing, so I'm going to address that this time. If you have, as a school board, no choice about getting the tests for our school, then what is being done to get our kids up to speed so that they can succeed on them? For example, the algebra part, much of that material in the test has never been taught. So, do we have a means to get our students up to speed in that area?
I have to think that they would be aligning the curriculum to go with the test and the Common Core standards that the test is based on. And if we're not there, then we need to work that a little bit harder.
Now, I'll agree with Kay in terms of, and I'm not a fan of aligning our curriculum just to make sure that we meet the test score, because I don't think that's the proper way to educate. Now, if that's what we're, what we're forced to do, and again, this is where I say, teachers' administration will find a way to best teach our kids the curriculum. I'll tell you, in the last three years, in terms of curriculum overhaul, what we've done in terms of aligning with Common Core and trying to teach our, we're in a weird transition period because Illinois State Standards are out the window, but Common Core comes in, we've got a new set of testing, ACTs up and down, curriculums are longer required, so now we have a test that we need for finances, but isn't required for you to graduate. So, what are we supposed to do as a school district? So, in terms of that, my encouragement to you is look into exactly why we have to do PARC testing, that's what we want to talk about. It's not required for students to take, but we're required. So, it's a, it's a weird limbo that we're in right now. And I think that we're doing our best in the district to find a curriculum, a linear path to the end, what we need to do, but really, it's all about career and college readiness, not about what we do on the test. So, it's a strange one, I, I agree.
Just all of it back also to the, to the push by the federal government for STEM, science, technology, engineering. And everybody on the board right now knows that we need some help in our math department. And we got recs out there right now for a algebra teacher right now. If anybody in the community knows if somebody's graduating out there, let us know. Because right now, most of your teaching universities, the enrollment for teachers is down thirty to forty percent. So, finding these openings, more new teachers is going to be harder and harder, especially as the baby boomers that are retiring, we need to backdoor into school districts.
And we have two more questions concerning that high school curriculum that might be a good time to put these in now. Someone asked, what is your opinion of the Common Core state standards? And what support do our teachers need to effectively implement these standards? And then another question was, what is your opinion about our current high school education and curriculum? So, curriculum that goes along with the Common Core, what support are we going to give our teachers to help them implement that? And do you have an opinion about our own, current high school education and curriculum?
The Curriculum Committee's been working very hard, and as Dakota said, they've overhauled the curriculum successfully, I think, I think it's, I think it's very good now, it's, it's where it needs to be. As far as the Common Core standards, again, that's something that we don't have a choice on. I mean, we don't get to choose if we, if we teach Common Core, this is what we are told to do.
In regards to curriculum at the high school level, but not just at the high school, we've got it at the first grade all the way up through to all. Everything in this school district from curriculum has been overhauled, and now we actually have a Bible for every one of the classes, and what's supposed to be taught. We never had that before to the detail of the Bible. Now, we have something that these kids are supposed to be taught when they enroll in these classes. You have an objective course laid out. It's, it's better than it was, it's not perfect, but at least we're in the right path.
Well, and we talked about this curriculum overhaul and everything like that. In terms of the high school question, I'll say that honestly, the direction that we do is, that's what we do, policy, procedure, and give directions. If, if the direction is given by the board, and he is one of those seven voices on the board, if we feel whoever asked that question, that it's not in the place it seems to be, then obviously I don't deserve reelection, because I feel that it's headed in the right direction. Now, I'll be, yes, I agree, because it's change, change is hard. So, that would be my honest opinion, too, I take it it's headed in the right direction. Now, going back to Common Core, this is something that's, if we're asking about what support the teachers need, teachers need to tell me what support to need. I don't know, when implementing Common Core in the classroom, I see everything from a policy point, in terms of how it's going to affect them. Now, when I sit there at a board meeting and look to a teacher and say, what do you need? And all I get is a head shake, then obviously, what's there is what's needed. So, I think that's one thing, if the teachers feel the need, that they need something else, they need more support, they want to create that line of communication. Again, I'm not an educator. And you look at my father being an educator, I can only, you know, learn so much from him, he doesn't talk so much anyway. But I, I want to be able to be, you know, boots on the ground, figure everything out. Over the last four years, I, I think the teachers and aides here have seen me throughout the building, saying, what do we need, what to change, everything like that, go to the administration. So, again, what support do we need? Teacher's going to have to tell us that.
I know in the elementary that they have a new writing curriculum and language curriculum, I believe, and they, I've heard that that has helped a lot. And I know that they have new math books finally, which I think would help. And so, training them for the math program and giving them time to go through the materials and incorporate it, I think would be, help them a lot.
If you want to expand on this, or if you feel like it has already been touched, that we have a couple with this, similar thought. How do you feel about the communication lines between the board, I mean, teachers, the administration with the teachers? And sometimes it seems like the board is withdrawn from what is actually going on in the classrooms.
I'm going to speak for myself, that I don't get any phone calls, and if, if anyone in the district has an issue that they need to discuss, I'm willing to talk to anybody. I'm not hearing from, from many people. I do hear from some people out in the community. I'm very approachable, I promise. Please, if you, if you have questions, please talk to me. I will, I would do my best as one of seven on the board to make sure that we get a line of communication up there.
As a teacher, I know I was very apprehensive in talking to board members and people for fear of repercussions, and they didn't happen. And I feel that a lot of the teachers don't say things because they're afraid. They're afraid of losing their jobs. And I think that's a real thing. With moving to the new school, I believe that a lot of the teachers, it's different. Before, we were treated, we, not teachers, but they were treated better, and I know that at the time of moving, there was a lot of things that went on and a lot of hard feelings. And I know when they started, now, I'm speaking mainly for the elementary, because that's where we was. And I know that there was a lot of hard feelings and things, and things were normally implemented that I didn't agree with. And if anybody said something, then you will let know that they didn't appreciate it. I know, because I made a comment one time. So, I feel like there is a need for the communication, and a need for it, and people should be able to say things and not be afraid of repercussions. And I think that sometimes when things are going on, maybe they're not, the teachers see a better way, but they're afraid to say something, prepare the, of the backlash, for what's going to happen to them, or they might lose their job. or what's going to happen to them, or they might lose their job. That's a real problem. I love it. I know it. So I think that we need to come up with something, and maybe work with the union. After the teacher's strike, I know that we had a committee that had with three of the board members, and I don't think the superintendent was allowed to come. And they would talk about problems and things, and it worked very well. And then things got better, and they could move, so maybe that needs to be reestablished. But I do think that there is a need for that.
I think.
Another high school, one, a couple of them actually all combined names. What is your opinion about all the cell phone usage going on in the high school? Majority of high school students walk up and down the hallways with a cell phone in one hand and a drink in the other.
I was informed by my freshman the other day that the cell phone was too big. I think the rules had gotten a little lax about cell phones, but he told me that they were informed that cell phones had to be in their lockers, shut off. So that's what he was told, and that's what he's doing.
One of my coworkers at one of my former facilities, when they came up to me, he said, "Why is my daughter texting me while she's in school and I'm not working?" Second shift. So this was about, actually, he came in early, so, you know, he's talking, one o'clock in the afternoon. And I went up and I've been asking administration, "Why is this going on? Because this is not supposed to be part of our policy." Our policy is for them to be turned off and in lockers. However, I hear there is some gaps that need to be, should I say, addressed.
Well, in terms of policy, the policy that is in place is exactly what they address. Now, is policy being enforced or backed up? I don't know, like you said, but in terms of changing the policy, I'm a hundred percent behind changing the policy. I was behind writing the social media curriculum that we're going to implement this fall. If we can't have the devices that they use to use that line of communication, then I don't see that we're doing them any favor. Again, devices are Pandora's box here. It is difficult to coordinate the concentration of that many students to begin without some type of device in front of them that can challenge their learning. I understand that. That's why I want to look at ways that we can, one, create a policy that is friendly, two, devices, and allows the teachers and students the ability to work hand in hand, you know. And again, policy right now, I think we're in a weird transition period, trying to rewrite the policy. So that's one, teachers aren't where they're stuck, enforcing a policy that's outdated. And two, creating and encouraging a policy that implements devices. Because every, not everybody, but we're getting close to the point where everybody has it, and it's more of a learning tool than a hindrance.
The problem is just they don't use it for a learning tool, the tool that your sites are going to get them from. And I had that in current jobs, and that is a problem that they're more worried about hitting back on with their cell phone rather than doing the work. And we're creating that issue at the grade, at the high school level, at the grade school level. And then it gets harder for the older to work that out.
Well, that's the thing, it creates an habit then, so if you can create a good habit in school, and we're supposed to be teaching in the first place, then that problem doesn't become a problem that we're going to work for.
Hey, I'm going to put together that deal with our budget. The first question says, "Would you be willing to make cuts instead of raising taxes to balance the budget?" The next one, "There is no money, and that is not changed." So what process do you go through to make the decision to spend the money that we have? And the person that commented, "I pay plenty in taxes." And then the third question, because it's all going to balance the budget, raising taxes. The other one says, "What idea do you have to balance the budget with the proposed cuts from the state spending?" And Todd, they would like me to answer that first. When I'm ready to get dinner.
Thank you. Okay, can you repeat the first part of that question?
What idea do you have to balance that budget with the proposed cuts from the state funding?
Okay. This year, we've had a balanced budget up until this year. This year, we may not have a balanced budget, but it's not for lack of turn. We, we spend the money that we were allowed to spend, where we were allowed to spend it. Some of the money that we get are through grants, and they are for specific items. You can't take this money that's for Title I and spend it for something else. So unfortunately, our hands are tied a lot of times of how we spend the money. But one of the parts of that question was, are we be willing to make cuts?
Without? Would you be willing to make cuts without increasing taxes?
Yes. If it comes to that, we can't cut the educational process, that we can't cut. But if it came down to making cuts or raising taxes, I would rather make a cut.
Well, that's three questions, I'll try to keep this as short as possible. One, yes, I'm willing to make the tough decision on cuts, that is going to be the last resort. Two, if you look at my voting record, and when we talked about the levy every year, I was one of the few no votes. I'm actually, I was the only one. We needed to raise, I felt that we needed to raise the levy to stay in terms of, and yes, there were a slight increase in taxes. I was okay with that, trying to stay with changes in terms of education funding. Yeah, I did make that vote, I was okay. Four years ago, when I sat at this table, there was a question thrown out just to me, "Do you own property? Do I pay property taxes?" I did not. I'm proud to announce, I own property in the system now, so I guess my voice matters, because I pay property taxes. So that has changed. And then the last thing that I want to encourage all of you is, the funding formula for how schools get their money has to change. I've spent time down in Frankfield trying to encourage legislators to change how Farmington Central gets their money. It's archaic, change, recall, again, you're here for us tonight, but again, your voice is bigger than just who's on the school board. We have to look at ways of changing how we get our money, and then how we can allocate them. So yes, the short version, I'm willing to make a cut.
Like you said, Dakota says, the way that the system is set up, the rich districts maintain better financial means because of the tax base they have within their districts. I mean, you get into complexes that are around manufacturing, or I think John asked when our superintendent one time, he commented, he had a yeah, nuclear power plant in their district, so guess what? They got a huge tax base to be able to work on. You know, you look at Polk County, the corner Knox, York County, we're at, you know, whereas our major industrial base we have here, you know. So therefore, if it gets into the state formula to how it's set up, you really need to voice it back to all of our other political elected officials also, and say, "Hey, we need to balance out, make this tax structure more uniform for the entire state." And, you know, if the tough question comes, yes, we will have to take, make cuts within the district to go off and balance budgets. I'm not in any favor of raising taxes. I got my share of taxes to pay also in some of the areas. Everybody on the board pays taxes, so nobody's wanting to raise that tax levy more than it already is.
Yeah, as a member of the county board, yes, I did vote for raising taxes. I'll admit that. But at the same time, I also made strong cuts in different departments, in different areas. And I'm not afraid to make those decisions. I have not been afraid to make those decisions.
If I have to make a decision to make a cut or raise taxes at the time I look at it, I'm not gung ho wanting to raise everybody's taxes, but sometimes, depending upon what your choices are, it just depends on the circumstance.
If you go the other side, other than funding, what is the most important challenge do you think our district faces at this time?
I'll tell you. One of my big concerns, is like I spoke earlier, is the next generation teachers that we're bringing on, and they'll retain them also, as well as recruit them. I see this big pool that's going to be coming up, and I think it's going to be a bigger issue down the road than what we even have going on right now. And I am really concerned about what we're going to do in the future for replacement teachers as people retire. And I can understand why kids aren't going into the educational field also. When you look at where the school districts, not just Martin, but other ones are paying, when you look at the hours that they pay, they actually, it's school, you know, it's not just the time in the classroom, it's out of time also at home to do stuff also. And it's going to be a tough call down the road. I think in another five to eight years, you're going to see some huge, just huge openings for teachers in all the school districts.
And tonight, we talked about, you know, all with, you know, federal legislation and state funding, you know, and it seems like at times that we're just saying, "Oh, it's not our fault, there's no choice that we have, and we're just rubber stamping it." But that's our biggest problem, is within our district, what kind of choices can we make? With the funding, that is the original problem. So what kind of decisions can we make to change how we use that funding, or what type of ways we educate our children, and how do we support our staff? We've made those changes the last four years. You know, you look at any district around us, in terms of, their funding hasn't changed any differently than our funding has changed. Why can't they balance the budget? We've made that sacrifice, we've made those changes, and I think we are, we're putting our place, ourselves, in a place where four years from now, and four years from that, we're going to have a 21st century learning environment, with a curriculum that supports it, because we've been proactive, and that's what we have to do as a district and a board, is continue to be proactive and complacent on the changes. We always react to those funding changes.
Actually, one of our biggest challenges is our community support. I feel like, I don't know, our PTO, I think there's three people basically running it. I'm not sure how our booster clubs and things are going, on our participation. And I know with working families and people, that we need to do something to help our organizations and help our community become more involved in our school. That's a big issue.
We need to keep the focus on the technology and staying on the cutting edge of our curriculum, and making sure that students are getting the education that they need to get. I think that students that come to this school are very finely educated, but there's always your corporate, and we have to keep up with the changing world.
I kind of agree with Todd, but yet, in a sense, I also can say I kind of disagree. Because if we just stay on the cutting edge of the technology, what happens to our tech, what happens to our trades? Was that a recent school board meeting that a senior teacher just got released and used like traders instructor? The question is, what are we going to do without trades? What are we going to do, our building trades? Do we just say, "Hey, we don't have industrial arts anymore?" That was a question, and I was kind of, I had a question. So I think we should still strive for some of our trades, as far as carpentry, metals, shop, and even the architecture.
And the State Department of Education is making a strong push for both tech and hands-on. You know, not all of our students are, we keep telling them, are four-year college, but we want to prepare all of our students, which goes with this question. Do you really believe our Farmington High School graduates at this time are adequately prepared for their future in the real world?
Absolutely. Two of my children just recently graduated, one graduated college last year, one graduated college this year. She graduated as a nurse, she was a, she graduated the same year that Dakota did, and she was also a valedictorian. And I think they got an excellent education. My son, my youngest son comes home every night, and, "Dad, did you know this?" And it's like, "It's your friend, what do you talk about that?" It's, it just amazes you, so I'm thrilled that the education is available.
I have a little concern. And my main thing is, I've been tutoring a couple students, one student in math, and they're doing math with worksheets, and they don't have textbooks. And I tutored a student last year in physical science, and they weren't using a textbook. And I think the transition of going from book to textbook has interfered with the education that they're receiving right now, and it bothers me.
All right, moving right along. Now, we're going to go into the fine arts department. We have an award-winning fine arts department at both local and state levels. So how will you support and promote and help expand our growing and talented fine arts programs?
Myself, I've always been a supporter of the arts. I want to see them stay. I don't, that's one place that would be very difficult to make cuts if I ever had to, because I believe in the fine arts, it's something, most of my kids are advanced, a lot of them are in art. I believe that the more programs like that there is, the less trouble they get into, because they learn more disciplines.
Well, that's, and that question is, or did, promote, I mean, that's the word that I want to key on this. Yes, the programs are there, they do wonderful things, but does anybody know that they do wonderful things? Yeah, they've done them, stamping for the board every month, which is great. But how do we get the message out there that our art department is creating, as you've seen them, the mural in our building, murals on the Farmington Fire Department as well, more stuff like that, the music department gets their word out. You look at, there is a business in what our art department and our fine arts department do. I mean, we look at, we could sell some of that artwork that's down there for, you know, a good amount of money, because they're bad as money. No, I'm not a good artist, I never have been, you know, I quit playing saxophone my senior year, and that was it, that's all I had. And I couldn't stick figures as hard as I could go on drawing. But promoting it, and the ideas of, okay, we've got a great music department and art department, come to us with those ideas of, how do we get this message out there? How do we have a, you know, we have, I believe, we have Fine Art Night, stuff like that, we need to implement more, I agree.
If it talks about promoting and expanding, probably we'll have to expand it.
Exactly. And we look at, correct me if I'm wrong, we added ceramics, that was recently-ish, I'm putting you on the spot, three years ago, okay? So we've become stagnant, we're making a little bit in the art department. So again, look at the expansion and promoting it. So I think in terms of wording, yes, we can sit up here and say, "Yes, I love the art department," but we have to find ways to maintain it.
And we hope, you know, we need ideas to come to us.
And I'm going to add the financial situation. But it is wonderful, and I've been seeing on Facebook a lot of things that people post and share that the school puts out, and reading in the shop, and they are, they are wonderfully talented students.
Part of that, like, the communication, you know?
Well, as far as fine arts, you know, I heard talk about the arts itself, and I'm, I myself am tight to drama. I myself had a scholarship to drama when I went to Spurrier College. And I'm a big supporter of the drama department as well as, maybe I have not been here to help build a stadium, and I kind of, you know, but I do, I don't know if there's any other way we can really support or actually expand or broadcast a lot more, other than, I'm going to say, go back to the streamlining, streamlining of possibly stuff on the internet, you know, with the technology we have, there's a lot of things that can be streamlined, people can see it from there, you know. There's a lot of moms, you know, grandma, grandpas out there, great-grandgrandpas, "I can't see Johnny in a play, or I can't see Johnny in a music." Well, one way of being able to do that is maybe not during that week, of course, but several weeks later, hey, but, you know, maybe there's a possibility, you could put it on the website, and, you know, they might be able to watch it then. And then they can, that exposes it more to the public.
There was a spring for a musical artist in April, they might contact you, help build new desks. the staff. Okay, and then?
I'll see you, Mr. Plaidner.
Love you.
And the same person asked, equal time for all of our students? Can you give us an example, if you are elected, how would you promote our school, including all academics, clubs, sports, and activities? An example of how you might support and advocate each of these, and maybe, how to go along with that fine arts?
I'll bet you pick that one. A lot of people don't know that in the high school, we actually have a studio, a green screen, everything like that, and really, you are part of it. When you're high, we had the morning announcement, and it was moved up to the high schools. We have the technology and a editing board, and all these neat things that I even had, you know, I had access to some stuff like that, and that Western Lab and the broadcast. You know, actually, I've come to part of the administration and said, you know, you look at Elwood, Breville, we've got the athlete of the week. Now, I'm not wanting to do an athlete of the week, I want to do kind of a Farmington Spotlight of the Week, where we have students videotape an interview with a teacher, a staff member, a student, talking about the great things that are happening in this district. And then they edit it, put it on, and we publish it to Facebook page, our website, so people can see the Farmington Spotlight every week, from academics to sports to all that stuff. So that's something that we're wanting to look forward to come this fall.
Yes, I was at the bottom of that, at the bottom run, and we kind of bring together a studio, they have work, and we broadcast every morning as part of our communication class in eighth grade, parents and grandparents can see it. And then, he's the candidate this year, so that's a whole number of stuff that, all right. So, would you please pick two district goals, and tell us how you would encourage, support, and implement a chosen goal? If you could get two district goals, how would you encourage, support, and implement the chosen goal? A couple things specifically that you would like to promote.
All right, yeah. Two things, we both be learning goals. One, and again, I think you see a common theme, that I talk about technology in terms of, and again, this fall, we talk about the social media creation and social media. Now, that's the first thing I would, the students to feel the ability to embrace social media in terms of how they present themselves and create themselves, and give themselves an online persona. And two, the learning goals for teachers, the training and development of teachers that we have within the district, feeling that, you know, we have a peer mentor program that works. I want the teachers to feel that when they come in every day, it's not the same thing where they are teaching the kids the same old thing. They feel comfortable to go to the next teacher, say, you know, what, what am I doing wrong? What am I doing right? And have that environment, and come back to that line of communication, that everybody who's in the district feels comfortable to talk to each other. So creating an environment that is learning focused from top to bottom each way.
One thing I would like to do is to, to improve the communication with the teachers and the board, is to set up the committee that we used to have, where they had the board, a couple board members, once a month, and discuss problems with just the teachers and the board, to try and build communication there.
I'm going to bring up a goal that, I'm going to even expand a little bit on the case that is, I don't think that also, I don't think that's just to say only teachers, I think that would be needed for the bus company, okay? Even for some of the bus drivers, is there a possibility that some of them are not, they're afraid, or they're not, they're told, hey, don't say anything to any of the board members, and don't say to the administration about what's going on with the buses? You know, we've had these issues with these buses, in particular, you know? Maybe the transportation committee needs to meet with some of the bus drivers, away from that management sector. What are your issues? What are your, what are your problems? So maybe they can develop that and do a good kind of ideas.
I guess one of my ideas of the goal, also for the upcoming, if I could relate, is continuation of the engagement within the community, going to add the task of Division 2020. I think a lot of the programs that we did implement in the past two years, one of them being is getting Rosetta Stone into the lower grades as an ability to outreach to the lower grades. Originally, we had two openings for more language teachers, and of course, we're going to find one, and we hooked into Rosetta Stone, which tied into the Vision 2020. Feedback from the community was that they wanted to add more languages available at the lower grades. Through the Rosetta Stone, we're able to do that. If we had some more feedback back from the community, there's some other areas, then we could find financially problems that we could build and deal with these other programs. Rosetta Stone was a way that, when you look at Bank for Your Buck, what we got out of it, it was a win-win for everything. Because now, we also open up the district to transfer students and families, and maybe one student had French, and another had German in a different school district, they don't have to start with just Spanish, that's all we had available here. With Rosetta Stone, they could continue that here. And like you said, if we could find other classes of curriculum that could fall into that with some feedback from the community.
And, an extension of our school day, will you continue to support the Y M C A aftercare program?
Definitely. The Y M, that is such an important part of our school, and it helps for parents with children who work, it's wonderful.
I agree with Dave. It's a very, very important program to have, to utilize in more, for some, was that a and it was a God's, correct?
I second all that, absolutely.
Yeah, there's no issue.
And here's a side of here. What are your views on collective bargaining? Views on collective bargaining?
Kind of a broad question. That's what it is, it's called collective bargaining. It's two different parties meeting to come to a agreeable settlement. It's a give and take, and depending on what we have to give versus what we can provide. If we give too much, then we're going to look at tax rate, you know, rates going up.
I've been on the negotiations committee, I thought that our negotiations went well. Again, like Kelly said, you know, we have so much money that we can work with, and I think the way we've approached it the last couple of times has worked well for us and the union. I think it made it a lot easier for, for decisions to be made, and less hard feelings, I would say.
The whole, the whole thing is just show you what's available, and then everybody knows upfront, you know, here's what we got, how we want to work towards a mutual end. You can slice it up any way you want it, but this is what we've got to spend.
Now, the last two questions I have, we're with board members. Should board members be allowed to run for an unlimited number of terms, or should they be kept after two consecutive terms?
Well, since I'm running for my third, I guess I better answer this one first. I feel that I'm an effective board member, I feel that we've done some great things in this district. When I feel that I'm not going to be an effective board member, I would take my name off the ballot or not run. But as long as I'm able to serve, and people want to elect me, and I hope you want to elect me, I'm going to serve.
I, I don't know, I wouldn't have an opinion on person capping, but if you look at, maybe you would have anybody that would be willing to serve, that you might run into, you might have to have some. I will tell you, this will be my, if I ever reelect, this is it. I've been in serve eight years, and I've done what I can for the district, and you will bond everything. So, personally, yeah, I'm going to serve two terms, and that will be it. Hopefully, I'll have a second term.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm kind of like the Bill of the Surprisedy my last term also, I got voted some freshmen, and I may have to mind that. There's no need for me to be reelected. So like you said, also, it depends on if we have somebody in the community that wants to backfill also. You know, we're fortunate this time, we have five people running for four open positions. There's been a lot of years in this district where we only have four people running for four slots, and sometimes it's last minute, get somebody to take in and put a ballot in.
Well, and then that idea kind of trickles down from, if we look at our state legislature, you have somebody at the top that's been elected in many, many times. And our district has more voting power when you vote on the school board, because you have a select number of individuals that will actually go to the ballot and change that. However, on April 7th, there's going to be very little turnout for that vote. I mean, we're going to be talking to hundreds of votes, and that's, it's sad to see, because we know how many people are in this district. So they have the power to change who sits on the board more than any other, not any other, but most of their election. So again, we've got five or four spots, so they'll, they'll have a voice, and I'm enabled to say, you know, we need new, new voices on there, or we like to continue to say.
I feel like that, the same, that, you know, it's up to the public to vote. And if they vote and they don't like somebody, then they'll turn out and vote, and they won't be elected.
Which, which I have to agree, but I also have the opinion of, you know, myself, I've been on two different boards, that the city council or county board, I've spent my time, it's someone else's turn, I hate, you know, I hate to say it, you know, but, you know, if I feel if I can't get what I want done in that eight years, or the two terms, you know, or maybe someone else needs to help out. You know, maybe some new ideas, some other new ideas, you know? It's nice, it's nice to have, it's nice to have new ideas, instead of, sometimes it can be stagnant.
Okay, and this one we would like each of you to answer, this did come from the audience. The question is, do you see yourself as a leader for a follower?
I'm hoping to see myself as a leader, somebody who will say their opinion and say how they feel about things.
I would see myself as a leader. I, I, as you know, Ron said, I've been on many other boards, I've been committee chairman of Cub Scouts Department for years, and I just moved up to charter organization rep. I was a scout master, assistant scout master. I, I've served in many roles, so I, I would like to consider myself a leader. I ask anybody that's on the board, I'm more than willing to give my opinion.
Again, I would see myself as a leader, but it really doesn't matter how I see myself. I think my resume, especially my voting record on the board, will show that I haven't always followed the regular vote, I'm the one that brings the conversation. I've got plenty of no votes in my name as well, so if you go through the minutes, you'll see that yourself. Talk to me in person, I'll give you my resume, I wouldn't care. There are plenty of opportunities that I've shown myself as a leader, not the same.
Well, anybody puts their name on a ballot, so, otherwise you wouldn't be doing it in the first place. Kudos to everybody that's on, up here at this stage. If, if you, if you weren't putting your name on a ballot, how can you say you're not a leader by doing that to yourself? You know, that's why everybody's going to answer the same way. At the same point also, like you said, I guess how you say, am I a leader or not? Yeah, I mean, I'm currently the president of the board, trying to give these guys some direction, which we do do. I give everybody an open time in our closed session to voice their opinions. I don't want to not hear everybody's opinions, so that we can still stay within our time constraints and not get related. I hope Dakota and Tom will agree to that, I believe. But besides that, you know, I hope that you decide to reelect me, that's fine, and Tom, that's the way it goes.
I see myself as both, okay? There are times you need to be a leader, and there are times you need to be a follower, okay? Not everyone can be a leader. If everyone wants to be a leader, then you have no followers, and then you don't get anything done. Okay? So there are times you need to be both. Now, I do have issues of trying to be adamant, other than issues that I've been not a really good follower, because, because the direction that you're going is not the right direction, and I want to make sure that that direction is, well, my view on that direction is well-known. Now, if it's, if it perceives that that's the direction we're going, okay, I'll follow. You know, I, I can also, as in, as in, I've been 23 years in the military, I can be a good soldier, I can be a good follower, if we're in the right direction.
Along with that right direction, today I was looking up some quotes, so I can be real clever here in front of you, and with leading that direction, I have this one from Yogi Berra, "You must be careful if you don't know where you're going, because you might not get there." But then a serious one in the field of education, and with our money in the state, we don't always know. John F. Kennedy said, "A child miseducated is a lost child." I do believe, Purple, I am proud to see my boys graduate from Farmington Christian. And so, I want to thank the F F I S S T, Farmington Federation of Integrated, Support Staff and Teachers. We're sponsoring tonight, appreciate the candidates for being willing to run and serve our community. Certainly appreciate those of you, our number is sparse, certainly appreciate those of you who care enough to come. Thank you for hearing and coming. I always want Farmington to improve and be better. So, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Bye, Dr. Seuss. Do be sure and vote on April 7th. Carla, do you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, and thank the candidates for coming, cheering your opinion. And I think we have five excellent candidates, and this will be streamed, and you will be able to see this on the website after this. So if there are some questions or things that you don't remember what the responses were, you'll be able to see that. So thank you, everybody, thank you for coming, thank you, candidates.